At this time, we will open the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners' formal session for January 21, 2016. It is 10:01 a.m. We are in formal session in room 32 of the courthouse. Can we have Desiree, would you do the flag salute for us, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time we have set aside for invocation. Commissioner Springer?
Yeah, it's my privilege today to introduce my personal bodyguard, a friend, Don Moon. He's the pastor of Assembly God in Amity. Great guy, gentle giant. But his son worked for me a number of years ago, and he's much bigger.
Wow.
Much taller. What was your son, 6'8"?
He's 6'6".
6'6", okay.
I have to look at him.
He's a full-grown kid. So anyhow, Don's gonna come do invocation for us, and I really appreciate it. Come on, Don.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to come and pray over you guys, and just wanted to use the microphone, too, so we can hear.
It slips right out of there, Don. There you go.
I usually don't have to use one of these at church. I talk loud enough, but it's good enough.
I'm not sure if that's hot, is it?
It is.
It is hot?
Yes, it's good. Anyway, some years ago, when I was younger, I took a year off from what I was doing and went to culinary school. So when I preach sermons, or when I pray over people, or when I grade these stuff, a lot of times I put it in the form of a recipe. So I was thinking last night, I says, "What would be the recipe for making up a commissioner?" And I came up with six things. The first is boldness. The boldness that David showed when he met Goliath in First Samuel 17. Then there was compassion. Compassion that Peter showed as he cut the ear off of a priest-servant, and then Jesus reached out and touched the ear and healed it. The third is unity. In Psalms 133:1, it says, "Work together in unity for the greater good of things," for the greater good of county in this case. Then there's worthiness. It says in the Ephesians 4:1, it says, "The walking worthy of your calling with wherever you're called." You guys were all elected by voters, and there's a place of worthiness of those votes that were cast for you to bring you into this place. There's a place of peace that you need to have. Ephesians 6:15, it says, "Shod your feet with the preparation of the gospel of peace." That you'd always be prepared for a place of peaceful settlement in things. And that that peace you'd be able to take home with you at night. I don't know how you guys do, what you do, and work in this place without having that, because otherwise, some of the things that comes before you would just eat at you. And when you go home at night, it'd be a hard struggle for you. So I'm hoping there's a gospel of peace within you. And the third most important would be the ingredient of wisdom. And First King Solomon prayed for anything he wanted, but he asked for wisdom. Lord granted him that. So for these six things, we're gonna pray today. So Father God, I lift up these things, that it be boldness and compassion, unity, wisdom, peace, Father God, that there'd be these places, Father God, that just be within each and every one of these commissioners, Father God, that they would hear your voice and listen to what you have to say, Father God, that you'd lead and guide them through all things, that your Holy Spirit would reign down upon them, Father God, that you would touch them, Father God, and, as I say, call out to you, Father God, you give them the answers they need, Father God, to settle whatever business that there is, Lord Jesus. I thank you for that, Father. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Pastor. Good words.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, they do have a great ministry also at the church. Hang on just a second, General Don. Great ministry at the church where they're giving out food. And could you just say a couple of words about that while you're still here? I'm sorry I didn't bring that up.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'd love to say a couple of words about it. I wanna say that a lot of this, the food that we give out today is all due to YCAP. And I wanna just throw a plug. If I got a chance to throw a plug in for YCAP, I'm gonna throw a plug in for them, because they're actually the hub of what goes on in this county. They collect food and it goes back out. And today, we're giving out food. We're giving out somewhere between 500 and 1,000 pounds of food, whatever I can load into my van. And literally, it'll be gone in an hour and a half in Amity. And it's kind of amazing. People just come in from everywhere to get it, and they expect it there every Thursday. So it's kind of nice. And then on Saturdays down there, we give out bread. Every week, we pick it up at Fran's up in Toowallton. And then we have the food bank on Saturday down there, too, that we give out a box of food, which is about four days' supply of food for a family. They can get one a month. Such a great need for this, that if you guys get a chance to support YCAP in a way, I just urge you to do that, because it gives food out all over the county, too. Families are truly needed. I've heard some statistics about places in Amity where the average wage is 70,000 to 80,000. It was printed in a paper, and I thought, "Those aren't the people I know." Because the people I know are coming down here to get food, just to stretch their budgets out for that week. So there's my point for YCAP and what we're doing.
Thank you. And Mary's heavily involved in YCAP and...
Thank you, Pastor, for what you do. And YCAP is an amazing machine. It's like we talked about compassion. It's a compassion machine, whether it's socks for homeless people, or food for children or families, and shelter, and they do it all.
Yeah. Homeless council's coming up at the end of this month, and it's very important that we care about that.
Thanks, Don. Thanks for your ministry out there and your folks. Appreciate it.
Thanks for what you do. Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we have set aside a 30-minute period for public comment on any topic other than quasi-judicial land use matters or other topics scheduled for public hearings. Unless extended or restricted by the chair, public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Does anybody have anybody here to make public comment? I wanted to start off this morning and introduce those who are players here and joining in the proceedings. We have Dave Adams from KLYC has been gracious enough to record these proceedings and stream them on klyc.us. Appreciate that very much, Dave. Lucy Flores-Mendez is our board executive secretary and records all the proceedings. We appreciate her getting us up to speed on that. Laura Schabold is our administrator. Our deputy administrator is Chuck Vesper. Commissioners Stan Krasnich and Alan Springer and County Council Dave Burnish and our paralegal Desiree Lundee. A quote before we start from Thomas Jefferson.
I think it's Christian Burnish.
What did I say?
But that's okay.
Okay, so what we had last time...
Strike that for the record.
We couldn't get the time right or the day right. No, I'm not gonna get anybody...
We're keeping an eye on you.
I was just happy I got his last name right.
That's good.
Did I say Dave?
But he kept looking behind him. He's like, "My brother Dave, where'd he go?" Anyhow.
Okay, so every week it's gonna be, "Ooh, doesn't get the right name used." All right, Thomas Jefferson, I got that name right. A quote from him from 1810, "The freedom and happiness of man are the sole objects of all legitimate government." I hope that's what we work on here today. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Old business, we have a discussion regarding the Newburgh-Dundee bypass letter. Commissioner, did you want to discuss that?
That stands.
Yeah.
We have a letter before you, though.
As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had a letter that we were being asked to sign onto to support the taking of the bypass intersection of 219 and the termination of the bypass, a letter to LCDC asking for a compatibility and termination from that body. And at that time, I asked that we set that aside, any discussion of that, until we, the Parkway Committee meeting, which was held this morning in Dundee. And that letter was discussed at length. There was a resolution that came out of that meeting. As you're aware, the Parkway Committee is an advisory committee to the jurisdictions concerning the bypass and other transportation issues. And they did pass a resolution this morning asking that we not send a letter to LCDC or any other action that could possibly delay the process of getting the bypass completed. So that discussion took place. The board, there was a very good discussion, and anybody who would like to see that, it is also our good friend, Mr. Dave Adams, was there streaming that live this morning, and so that would be available to see. But I agree 100% that we do not want to delay this bypass. We do need it completed. But I also very strongly suggest that the parties that were present, that we use the momentum created by the threat of this letter to bring pressure to bear on both ODOT and our legislators, the governor, to see to it that we get the bypass completed, because that is the only true resolution to the concerns. And those concerns still exist. Nothing that was decided today alleviates the concerns that both sides of this issue have, the termination of the bypass of 219. But that's what happened, and the Parkway Committee, their resolution, and by way of that resolution would be their recommendation to this body that no letter be permitted. I'm gonna be watching with great intensity to see to it that the parties do come together and do start a discussion on coming up with a reasonable compromise to the concerns of all of these jurisdictions. So at this point in time, that's what was transpired.
Stan, could you read us that for the record? We have it on tape, the motion that was passed.
The motion was passed by Yamhill County Parkway Committee. The Yamhill County Parkway Committee opposes a proposed letter from Yamhill County and others to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, a copy of which is attached to this motion or to any other action that would delay the construction and completion of Phase 1 of the Newburgh-Dundee bypass. Parkway Committee commends the Newburgh Planning Commission for Resolution 2105-311, recommending that the Newburgh City Council delay their vote on the proposed amendment of its transportation system plan amendment until March 2016 in order to allow time for all authorities to meet in an effort to mitigate impacts of the final decision. I would point out that Mayor Andrews, at this time, not that he amended this resolution, but did say that that is not a locked-in time, that he's willing to extend that out as far as April, if necessary, to bring the parties together and reach some conclusions. So there was an effort on Mayor Andrews' part to help and to make certain that one of my concerns, as this resolution was brought forward, was that we're trying to negotiate something with a gun to our head. And so anyway, this motion that I just read was passed unanimously by the Parkway Committee this morning.
Okay. Yeah, and it was, you know, it's a step in the right direction. The Planning Commission has now made the recommendation to the city council, and I just stressed, we had Lad Hill there, and I just stressed that, you know, both sides need to work together. It doesn't do any good for one side to bring some compromise and be willing to discuss compromise and the other, you know, all-or-nothing kind of attitude. So I really feel like it's not gonna be one side's going to win. Both sides are gonna lose a little bit, and we have to realize that in a compromise. You have to be willing to give up some things. But the committee was clear. All of the financial players were there today and were able to speak to this issue, along with Lad Hill was there to do a little presentation, and I appreciated the atmosphere of the meeting, so.
Yeah, I think we can all agree nobody wants to see the bypass delayed in any way, and we'd all like to make sure that our citizens are as safe as they can be, whether they come from Newburgh or anywhere else. So I appreciate the planning commission's done, and I appreciate that the Parkway Committee has, you know, agreed that we're gonna try to work together to get this thing figured out.
And another nice thing, Chair, is we talked to Tim Potter, was there. We talked about ODOT's schedule and the fact that we can kind of compartmentalize this without much repercussion, because that was one of the big concerns, is if this isn't put off to the side and we don't stage this a certain way, that we could cause a delay. He assured us that with these timeframes and making these decisions, that ODOT would work with the project to keep it going and compartmentalize this one component to fit in when we get done with the discussion.
That's a key piece. Thank you. All right. Other business, we have none. Public hearings, we have none at this time. We need to go into executive session. Christian?
No, I don't think so. Thank you. Yeah. So before we recess and go into executive session, we need to read this. "The Yamhill County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660. Oregon law allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session to consult with authorized staff and council concerning real property transactions pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6604. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Authorized representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject that the session has previously announced. No final decisions may be made in the executive session. At the end of executive session, we'll return to open..."
At this point, any announcements?
I just have a comment going back to our agenda on the letter and the recommendation by the Bypass Committee. I was just interested if we should, you know, as a board, we've had this before us and, you know, the desire was to get everybody to sign it. I wonder if we need to, you know, make any final statement that we aren't signing it or what is our pleasure on that, I guess? Are we going to take the recommendation of the Bypass Committee or where are we going to end up?
Commissioner, I think at this point it's premature for us to make any kind of decision on the situation, so I would recommend we leave everything status quo.
Meaning, because their recommendation is not to send the letter, so what are you saying then with that comment about the letter?
What I'm saying is that I don't believe at this particular point we should take any action, make any decisions or any comments because it was, we don't, we don't have all the information. And I think what the, what the Parkway Committee did this morning is irrespective of what this board can and will and will ultimately do. So I think that's a separate, it's a separate issue. So I, I'm recommending that we make no comments or no decisions at this point.
I would like to say also that that is a recommendation by the Parkway Commission. I want to participate, I want to be present, and I want to make sure that these negotiations that were talked about are actually happening before I agree with that recommendation. I was very strong in my desire to see no delay in the bypass. However, I was also equally strong in my desire to see a mitigation decision on how we're going to deal with that termination of the bypass at 219. I don't think that that was resolved this morning, and I don't think this resolution resolves that. So, everybody was in accord that they're going to work on it. As I see that work taking place and I see an honest effort on the part of the City of Newburgh and the Lat Hill community, then I'll be more, more interested in, in us either following this recommendation or at least doing something different. But right now, I think we're premature, as Chairman Sterrett said, premature in this body taking an action.
Well, I'm not asking for the body to take an action. I'm just, this was such a hot item for you guys, the letter, to get it off and get it signed. I'm wondering now, we are not going to be addressing this letter at this time or even, and, and actually, I don't know, the counsel that I received from our county counsel was, this isn't the tool to begin with.
Commissioner, I think this is not the time for this discussion. It wasn't on the agenda. We don't have all the information, and so I would respectfully request that we not push for some kind of a decision at this point when we've expressed that our, our acknowledgement of the resolution from the Parkway Committee. But I am not in any position, and I understand Commissioner Primicich is not in any position to make a decision on a letter, this letter, future letters. So I, I suggest that this is not a topic for today's discussion.
Well, this, we're not, we did bring this back for, for discussion today because of our discussion before, and we put it off, we're going to go put it off a week, but now we came back to the 21st to actually discuss this letter. So I, that's, that's kind of my point. And I guess all I'm saying is, I'm not asking for, do we need a formal action, do we not need a formal action? But at this point, the letter is tabled. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Yes, we said at the, we said two weeks ago that because there was concern about the various parties who were not made a party to the letter, that we wanted to have some discussion prior to us doing anything. And that's when I looked at my calendar, saw that our Parkway Committee was meeting this morning, that we would have this discussion at the Parkway Committee, which we did. The Parkway Committee did make a recommendation. It was not, and I, it was not the recommendation of this board, at least it was not my understanding, that we were asking the Parkway Commission to come up with a resolution at all. All we were saying is, we wanted to have this discussion with them before we made any decision whatsoever. That discussion took place this morning. I was present, you were present. This, bringing this to our agenda now, I think was premature. I would have loved to have had it come to our informal where we could have had a robust discussion about what was, what was talked about at the Parkway Commission. And then if we wanted to have some formal action, then we would put it on our agenda. So my, my desire at this point in time is, we have entered into the record everything that was stated in the Parkway Commission, and for us to do anything further, to say that we will, will not do anything in the future, I think we're premature in doing that.
I'm not asking for that. I'm, I'm simply going, this came to informal, then it came to formal. Now we were waiting for this to come back and, and to discuss it again in formal. So it's not like this is a brand new thing, guys. I'm just saying, at this point, this is going to be shelved. Is that correct?
I, if you would.
That was kind of my understanding from what I was hearing. I'm just trying to clarify where we're at with this.
My, my impression is that we don't have enough information, and to make any kind of determination, as I said earlier, about a letter, or that particular letter, I think is, is not doing justice to giving it due diligence. So I'm not prepared to make any decision on whether or not we suggest that LCD do the, do the study, whether or not that's the vehicle. I'm not prepared to do that. I'm speaking for myself and saying, I need to have some time to look at this, and handing us a resolution that the Parkway Committee did it this morning is, again, I don't think that's due diligence.
Well, we're not talking about solving the problem, we're just addressing the letter. That's all there is to it.
If, if it would satisfy, I will make a motion that we continue to monitor what is going on with the Parkway Commission, with the various jurisdictions involved in this issue. And as we see the, see that moving forward and we're satisfied that people are working in an honest effort to resolve these issues, then we'll be better prepared to have a discussion. So at this point in time, I would move that we table any further discussion on this until we do that monitoring.
We have a motion before the board to continue to monitor the situation and to continue to look into it. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second, all right. All right, any further discussion? All right, so passes unanimously. So at this point.
I don't know if you get called to question.
All those in favor of taking a look at this and researching it and monitoring the situation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. So at this point, basically, we're just going to look and, and see how this thing plays out, get more information. All right, any, any other announcements?
There is a, coming up on the 30th at Chumecada, there's an innovation project taking place that you may be interested in at least checking out. There's a group, there'll be three teachers, three students from each of the seven school districts in our county, and then 21 businesses present, working on a project. They'll be given a problem to solve as a group. There'll be a teacher, a student, and a business person in a group, and during the course of that three hours, they are going to build a circuit board and solve whatever this problem they're given to solve that will be related to business. The whole idea is that there's a group of people in the county who are working hard to make Yamhill County the first county in the country that will be a gigabyte county, and this is one of the steps toward that. And I'm going to a workshop, the first and second, that deals, that the USDA has funded to help rural communities become more, have more access to broadband. So there's a lot of things happening that I think will be very beneficial to economic development in our, in our rural areas, but I just wanted you to be aware of that thing on Saturday if you have the opportunity. That's the 30th, Saturday, the 30th, at Chumecada, so.
Great, thank you so much, Commissioner. All righty. Well, at this point, we'll close the formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners, January 21st, 2016. It's 11:05.